Alright, folks. We're hitting that hour of 7 o'clock. Glad that everybody was able to get their clocks set correctly over the weekend. Call to order, our meeting of, regular meeting of council Monday, March the 10th at 7:00 PM. I do have to just ask council's indulgence, please, to see if you would be agreeable to switch the order on our agenda that would have us move the one item out of TPI to be our first item of new business, followed then by finance and admin items. Aside from that, there's no other changes on here, other than to let you know you're going to be entertained with a little video in the mayor's message as well this evening. So with that, can I have approval of the agenda? So, second. All those in favor? opposed, motion carried. Public participation, this is the time for the folks in the audience who can step to the podium. Or did you do with the microphone, Marcy? There we go. If you have anything, message to council, something that you wanted to say, this would be the time?
My name's Audrey Purcell. I live at 2997 Charlotte Drive. I've applied for a bylaw for a secondary suite, I mean a permit, and I've, VHA, I'm still in the process of doing the septic field. I have it started by the end of this month. It'll be finished, and then I'll have the approval from VHA. I'd like to proceed with the permit at this. Apparently, I'm in violation of bylaw 977, that I've started the suite without a proper permit. I paid the extra fees that were due. There's a couple of items I'm not sure about. I've complied with everything else, but the smoke detector in the furnace unit, I don't see reason why I should have to install that. Is that under a new law? Or, it's an existing furnace, I don't understand why it would, I could see this more or less in a commercial application, where in your building of this size, but for a secondary suite to install a smoke detector in the furnace system.
It's not usually a conversation along there. Those are matters of staff, and certainly I would make that call in and raise the question. Staff are available and probably taking notes.
Okay.
So, if there's anything else.
That, yeah, just to have this removed, that you're gonna put notice on my title saying that I'm not compliant. So I just say that I wanna, my field is gonna be done by the end of this month.
Okay. Thank you.
Just to clarify, in a situation like the notice on title that we're talking about for tonight, he does have the opportunity to speak when the item does come up on the agenda.
Okay.
So, I know we don't normally do that, but in this case, he would have the opportunity to speak on the item then.
Okay. So don't leave after our movie. Any other members of the public? And for a third and final time, any other members of the public in public participation? It's already been done. I'll move forward then, item number three, mayor's message. I've got a couple of announcements here, and I'm sorry, one of them, I'm not quite up to speed on here, but apparently the post office depot four on Goldstream Avenue is putting on a fundraiser for the 11-year-old daughter whose mother was killed on Goldstream Avenue. It's upcoming, we will get the information, and that will get posted to our website, so if there's anyone that wants to follow up on that, they can. The other one that I have here is our Callwood Women's Institute is having their annual garage sale and muffin break fundraiser Saturday, March the 15th, from 9:00 AM to 1:30 at the Callwood Community Hall. They're also looking for donations of saleable items that you can drop off to them. There is information, and again, that is on our website, but I will caution you, no electrical items. They are prohibited on resaling of any electrical items. The other one is a letter of recognition and thanks coming from National Defense for, it says, "I would like to express my sincere appreciation for the support the city of Callwood and Callwood Fire Department provided to the Department of National Defense when responding to the incident at Belmont Park Monday, the 24th of February. The quick response by the Callwood Fire Department ensured the safety of the family living in the home and minimized the damage to DND property. This is the second incident in the past year where Callwood Fire Department has provided support to the residents in the Belmont Park community, is a representation of the extraordinary connection between our communities. Thank you and your team for the support to our community." Captain Casivi of Base Commander of DND. And so, again, kudos to our fire department that were circulated earlier on that event. I think they had a motor vehicle accident first, and then they had the fire just simultaneously almost, so, well responded to. With that, I don't have anything else at this moment. Marcy, are we, who needs to roll this or do the intro on it?
Go ahead.
This is the result. Council encourages our staff to take advantage of training and the opportunity that is out there for them to expand their knowledge and skill sets for working for the city. And Marcy has been involved in a program here, how long's it been going on, Marcy?
This one's three months.
Yeah, so, this is her resulting project with her team through LMGA, and we're getting, it was shown on Saturday for her grade and mark, which we're anxiously awaiting to hear. And this is the public presentation.
You walk into this room at your own risk, because it leads to the future. Not a future that necessarily will be, but a future that might be. This is not a new world, it is simply an extension of philosophy. It has patterned itself after every person that has ever planted a ripping imprint of a boot on the pages of its history since the beginning. It will have refinements, technological advances, and a more sophisticated approach to the last one. But like every one of the councils that preceded it, it has one truth. Any councillor's ideology that fails to recognize the worth, the dignity, the rights of its citizens will become obsolete. A case to be filed ill for learning in the municipal zone. So you have been elected to council. What were you thinking? I'm Rick Sterling. You may know me from other local government films, such as Don't Hate the Rape Pair, Hate the Game, and Voting Isn't Just for Old People. In the municipal zone, we will help you with your transition to council by covering the following topics: council meeting proceedings, conflict of interest, and council staff relations.
Look, this is the fifth time I've been here requesting that something be done about the excessive speed on my residential street. Numerous animals have already been killed, and I'm just worried that...
(chirping)
(laughing)
Oh my god, I wish I had an alpha. Just worried that a child is gonna be the next to die.
Yes!
They scored.
Thank you, your worship. I've received thousands of emails concerned about this public urination problem that we've got happening here in the city. I see that we've got no options other than to move forward and have $150,000 spent so that we can address this problem. So I would like to move that the city fund this $150,000 through taxation and purchase and install two urinals in the downtown core.
I'll second that motion.
On the main motion, all those in favor? Unanimous, carried. Through the chair, I would like to move a motion that the city fund $500 for beautification for putting in native plantings and flowers around the outside of these urinals.
$500 for plantings? I can't support a motion like that.
What do you have against batunias in our community?
Yeah, the green agenda. Great. And this is why the union's agenda will fail here in East City. We have a law as well, way that people love when they have flowers.
(inaudible)
I'd like to put a new motion on the table. That $250 be put toward native plantings and beautification around the new downtown urinal.
I second the motion.
On the main motion, all those in favor? opposed?
(laughing)
Thank you, your worship. As council knows from talking to me earlier, this is gonna be a fantastic opportunity for the city. We'll be able to take that useless piece of farmland and turn it into a beautiful shopping center with tons of free parking. We might even be able to get an Ikea.
I'd like to put a motion on the table that the rezoning application be approved as presented.
I second the motion. Is there any member of the public wanting to speak to the application? Seeing none, all members put up their hands in favor. Carried.
Colin Stewart, municipal solicitor, gives us insight on the conflict of interest in
The first thing is for elected officials to be educated about what conflict of interest is, so that they are alive to the possibility of a conflict arising, and then being vigilant about circumstances that might trigger a conflict on their part. If they have questions, they can always consult with their colleagues or with senior municipal staff, and then if there appears to be a real issue, they can obtain legal advice. If they discover that they might have a conflict of interest before they're actually into the council meeting or the board meeting, they can try and discuss this with colleagues or with senior municipal staff to get a better idea. If they find themselves in a situation in a council meeting where something comes up and they have a strong suspicion that they're in a conflict of interest, or even if it appears to them that there is a reasonable possibility that they've got a conflict, then they would make a declaration that they are in a conflict of interest, and they are to remove themselves from the meeting and not participate in the discussion or the voting, and not attempt to influence anyone else's decision-making with respect to the matter.
The next item on the evening's agenda is a rezoning application for a large shopping center on Land Reserve Road. The applicant, councillor, I mean Mr. Borden, is here to speak to the application.
Your worship, as I am one of the developers involved in this application, I'd like to declare a conflict of interest, and leave the chamber at this time.
Well, that depends on the nature of the conflict of interest. There are two kinds of conflicts, and they have different consequences. If it's a non pecuniary conflict of interest, so if the council members' financial interests are not affected, then there is no legal consequence for a determination that the elected official was in a conflict of interest for the council member himself or herself. The consequences is that their vote would be nullified. However, if they participate in the discussion or vote on an issue in which there is a pecuniary conflict of interest, so it does affect their financial interests, the consequences can be disqualification from elected office until the next election, unless it's determined that the participation improperly at the meeting was as a result of inadvertence or an error of judgment in good faith. There is a mechanism available under the act. If a council member trying to do the right thing makes a declaration when it really isn't warranted, then under section 100, sub 4 of the community charter, there's a process available whereby the elected official can obtain a legal opinion to the effect that there is no disqualifying conflict of interest, and then the elected official can withdraw the earlier declaration of a conflict and resume participation in council meetings respecting that matter.
Let's take a look at council staff relations in the municipal zone.
Hey, I mean, you know, the Glenn, is there coffee and stuff for the meeting?
Coffee? For the meeting? I've been meaning to talk to you. How come you're asking staff to provide coffee and donuts for the council meeting? Oh, we've got so much to do around here, you can't possibly think that we have time to get donuts and coffee for council meetings. I'm so sick and tired of doing your work for you. Oh, and I've got all this stuff, and it's not freaking balancing. And you want donuts?
They're here, they're here. They're just in there. Council decided to take the initiative themselves to bring coffee and donuts. I was just wondering if you'd seen them.
Really, I'm really sorry that I snapped at you like that. There's no call for that. I appreciate that you do donuts and coffee, and you're always really good at telling me what a good job I'm doing, and I really appreciate that. I'm sorry, please accept my apology.
Me as well. I'm sorry for getting in your space like that. I should've knocked before I came in.
We've had a hard day.
We have, haven't we? Alright, so coffee's ready.
Oh, thanks. Alright, well then, let's go.
Gord Horff, former chief administrative officer, now member of council. Let's watch as he gives us insight on the effect of council staff relations in the municipal zone.
Well, I think that it takes work, but I think that hopefully both parties are willing. And as a councillor, I think it's incumbent for you to take the first step, especially if you're a new councillor. I think, you know, getting to know your staff, they're your senior advisors, they're your go-to people, they're, you know, leading your organization, and I think that, you know, making an effort to get to know them as professionals, being open and forthcoming, I think effectively as an elected representative, you're just gonna be missing out on key points of information, key professional perspectives that you're going to need to make an informed decision on either a policy or an issue about what you hope to accomplish during that three-year term. Lay out a plan, you know, what are we gonna get done in year one, or some of them more longer-term, is it three or beyond, that we can just set things in motion? Do we have our priorities straight in terms of, do we have consensus what we want senior staff to work on, and where our resources are going towards? I think is going to give you satisfaction, because at the end of the day, when you look back after spending three years at the council table, you're gonna be able to say, yeah, we thought this went through, we thought these were our priorities, we assigned resources towards those, and guess what? Year three, we knocked off four of the five. And that's a great sense of accomplishment, and you've moved the community forward of what staff is supposed to be doing, and what we, as council members, are supposed to be doing. You know, we don't guide the organization, we set out, we do policy, we set broad direction, we find resources for staff, and then staff will get it done for us if it's clear and understood, and it's realistic. So, you know, I've always felt that that is a great relationship, and a good use of political resources as well as staff resources.
In the municipal zone, all members of council have the statutory responsibility to consider the well-being and interests of the community, to contribute to the development and evaluation of the policies and programs respecting municipality services and activities, and to participate in council meetings. You are the voice in your community in the municipal zone. And don't forget, the bylaw officers are the most important people in the municipal zone.
I understand that this is being presented to LMGA and...
Leadership Academy.
Yeah.
Possible training.
Yeah, so it may end up in a new councillor's training session in the very near future.
What is LMGA?
Next item is one that gives me, I'm gonna do, okay, yeah, we'll do it that way. Next item is our presentations and delegations, and it gives me great pleasure to have councillor Judith Cullington make the presentation on this one in regards to the Rotary Award recipient sitting with us, Cindy Moyer.
So let me do a little bit of introduction to this one, and Marcy, that's an awfully hard act to follow. So, you know, I won't be anything quite as, quite like that. For those of you who don't know, the Victoria Leadership Awards have been around for about 10 years. They're hosted and led by Leadership Victoria in partnership with the University of Victoria and the Harborside Rotary Club. Those three organizations have worked together to develop what's become quite a successful model of collaborative community leadership celebration. So they have a celebration every year, and boy, do they have a really strong candidate group. I was very fortunate, I got to go this year to the Leadership Award dinners, and there were a lot of really impressive people there. They had their 10th anniversary this year, so there was a bit of a, kind of a celebration. And they said that since 2005, we've honored 58 individual leaders, including nine Exemplary Lifetime Achievement Award recipients, and five outstanding organizations. One of the greatest values of celebrating leadership is that it creates an inspirational ripple-in-the-pond effect. Leading by example inspires others to take up positions of community leadership. We're proud to have recognized and celebrated those leaders during the first incredible decade of the Victoria Leadership Awards. So they have a whole series of different awards. There's a youth award, and a lifetime award, and a, you know, University of Victoria one, and Royal Rhodes University Leadership Excellence. One of the award categories they have is the Rotary Community Leadership Award, which recognizes community leaders who meet the Rotary test of the highest levels of ethical behavior and community leadership benefit. There were two award winners this year. One of them, the emcee introduced by saying he will not be undersold. Gordy Dodd, of course. The other one, they introduced by saying, "This person is the executive director of the Coast Collective Arts Center, an enterprising cultural nonprofit, where she combines her 30 years of experience on the business side of the arts, education, and sustainable living, with her passion for community leadership. She has a reputation for building win-win relationships in her professional life and through her work over the years with a wide variety of not-for-profit organizations." Cindy is currently president of the West Shore Arts Council, a community organization embarked upon a quest to see a performing arts center built on the growing west shore. Cindy Moyer, recipient of the 2014 Rotary Community Leadership Award.
Madam Mayor, would you like to help me?
Yes. Let's do this. Maybe all of council wanna help? All of council? We'll... (applause)
Cindy, Cindy was my... She brought the flute. Yeah. Yeah. Are you ready? Yeah. Is it okay for screen when I have that? (inaudible). 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 (inaudible).
And I have to say that Cindy continues to champion Callwood in all things possible, so thank you. Item 4.2, we have with us this evening three members of our school district 62. We are graced with the presence of our up-and-coming, brand-new principal for the Royal Bay High School, as well as the vice principal and the chair of the Board of Trustees, Wendy Hobbs. So Wendy, and Mike Huck, and Wendy Beatle.
Thank you, everyone. I'm sorry, but I can't upstage everyone tonight because of the school, so. I would like to introduce two of our outstanding staff members. We have Wendy, the principal, or as I say, the grand poobah, and they told me I was a grand poobah, but I said no. And then we have Mike, and he's just the man. No, just kidding. (laughing) Well, we women have to stay. No, they're both wonderful, wonderful, top-notch staff members, and they just wanted to come and let you know that we're coming into your community, and we're coming on time for all that rumor. It's on time, and if you ever have any questions, Carol can email me, and we can save you all a lot of email. So, yeah, so we're on time. Both schools are on time. So I'd like Wendy to come and describe what's going on, and thanks for having us.
Thank you very much for having us here today. Mike and I thought it might be a good idea. I've met Mayor Hamilton many times in the same committee. We were actually part of the naming of Royal Bay, which ended up being Royal Bay. So I thought it'd be a good idea for us just to come here and be familiar faces, and I appreciate Wendy coming along with us and missing her evening activities. I'm sure she'll have enough of them this week anyways, but Mike and I just want to spend a few minutes talking about Royal Bay, which is what we're very good at, because right now, Mike and I are the only Royal Bay people around, so I'll let Mike start off first.
Good evening, thanks for having us. Just want to reassure everybody that the buildings are on target to be opening up in September 15. Hopefully, you've been able to drive by the site and see the building rising up out of the ground, and you'll see that we'll have this building, the shell, the other shell completed within the next two months, and from then, we're... to put some good sports teams out. The building itself is very compact in design, so minimized exterior skin and energy loss will be minimal, so it'll be, you know, environmentally friendly school in our community. And there is a non-combustible sprinkler building, so it'll be top-notch in terms of safety for the kids and stuff. I'm very excited to be a part of it, and hopefully, the community will benefit from it, which I think they will.
I'll keep your notes, since I wrote them. So, just a little bit about the school itself. As Mike said, it's a structured steel building, so it's made a little bit differently than some others. So, they manufacture this steel offsite and then bring it in and then put it up. So, you'll see it coming up pretty quick in the next few months. Also, you know, we, Mike and I have been doing a little bit of work on going to all the middle and secondary schools in all of the Sookso and Milne's Landing and Belmont to talk about what the school is about, introduce ourselves, because we are a brand-new school. We don't have a history, you know, like some schools are being rebuilt. So, that's pretty exciting for us. I've actually asked for a call-up for PAC members, and we had about 18 parents reply that they'd be really excited to be on the Royal Bay PAC already. So, we're going to look into having a meeting after spring break soon. We also are going to be going to Dunsthorpe Middle School, which is our feeder school, and also to our grade 10s at Belmont to talk about a mascot. So, we're going to start getting, moving on a little bit of what we call the Royal Bay wave and start talking about what is mascot going to be and go through sort of the process like Mayor Hamilton and I did with the naming of the school, but make it more of a student level so we can get their excitement also into this process. Academic programs, they'll be similar to Belmont as Belmont is now. They have some great programs, so we will be duplicating those programs. We'll have advanced placement programs. Academies, like Mike said, will probably be looking at things like soccer, maybe lacrosse, and these are just proposed academies. We have to go through a process to get there. Equine studies has been brought up, which sounds really exciting, same with golf, which is right down the road. So, we'll have to look into, you know, those kind of studies. There's also some academic academies. We've been looking at some, I think it was STEM courses and some marine biology, because we've got the opportunities with the ocean right there. 350-seat theater, which is going to be really cool, plus teaching kitchen, which is what we're looking forward to, because we'll have really nice lunches every day. And with Belmont, we'll look at similar timetables so that students in this, you know, in the Western communities can take advantage of both the schools with some kind of, you know, if they have, they want to take the teaching culinary arts program, but they live close to Belmont, they've got some opportunity to switch in between schools. So, Ray Miller, the principal of Belmont, and Mike and I are working very closely and setting up timetables that'll work for our students. So, thank you very much for having us here tonight.
That's great, thanks, Wendy. And keep in mind the woolly mammoth story of that site. Apparently, I heard just recently that there is an archaeological group coming in to do some work in there, in an undisclosed location at this point, but all in concert with the finding of those, that bone structure in there from some time ago, so it's a breaking story. Anything from council, comments, questions? Judith, I think?
No, I was just...
Oh, okay. Councillor Martin?
Actually, would you guys mind just stepping back up? I just have a couple of questions. Actually, I have questions for all of you, so Wendy's there too, so...
This is Councillor Martin?
Yeah.
Maybe this was a task.
I make up one once in a while. I'm dealing with a lot of rumors, obviously, so the very first one is great. I'm really happy to hear that the building's on time, and it's nice to sort of snub that out, that Royal Bay was...
I think the reason that happened is because unlike Belmont, where it's being built on-site, Royal Bay is being built away, being brought to steel, and you'll see the walls go up, lickety-split. They're absolutely on time for the opening in 2015. It's a different building process.
Which is fantastic. I mean, where the rumor originated from was from Langford councillors on Westshore Park and Rack. They had actually said it in a public forum. The first question I have is rumor-wise, is I know John Stubbs is a feeder for the new Belmont, but when we were at the economic, the question was, where is, which school's going to be the French immersion school, or where would the French immersion students be going from John Stubbs? Have, has there been...
Belmont.
Well, for sure, it would be Belmont.
Well, that's all, that's all just happening right now. We're just going into consultation with that. As right now, the forms that I've received that the board hasn't really passed yet, it's Belmont. So, we're, you've probably all heard about that, you know, the John Stubbs kids, and basically what we're trying to get out there, though, it's not just 140 kids in John Stubbs. We're moving 3,600 kids, because what people have to remember is for the last 10 years, we've talked about grade configuration and catchment areas, because we can't have all the kids coming into Royal Bay. That's not going to work. So, we've talked all along, you know, if people don't want to come out to meetings, you guys know what it's like, and then all of a sudden, decisions start to be made, and then people start to panic. So, we're just starting with how it's all happening.
I'll also add to that, sorry, that Royal Bay has the capacity of 800 at this point to be built out to 1,200 eventually, and Belmont has the capacity of 1,200 to start with, so that was also taken into consideration. Otherwise, if we didn't divide, you know, the way we had, we'd end up with probably Portables the first year.
Which leads to my second question, which you guys have kind of semi-addressed, was percentages of students geographically. What are we anticipating? Are we anticipating that Langford kids will be going to Royal Bay and vice versa, Callwood kids will be going to? Are we, you're talking about catchment areas? Have you guys done any thought process in that?
That's exactly what staff is doing.
Working on right now? Okay, good. Well, because one of my biggest concerns with the two schools is that I definitely don't want them to be competing with each other. Like, there's that negative con... There's always healthy competition, but there can be negative competition as well, so I think you get away from that if you don't have them geographically in the same...
They just want to go to school.
Yeah. The final question I have for you is, just, and Wendy, this is more for you, is, as you're probably aware, Callwood stepped up and contributed additional dollars to help fund the second field at Royal Bay. And can I get some clarification, because I've heard different things through council, and I've also heard different things through senior staff at the school district, on exactly what Langford has done regarding their contributions to two fields at Belmont High School, the new Belmont High School?
Wow, I didn't think I was going to come into a political arena here. Well, basically, they've, we've gone into partnership with the Gaudi Field, and originally, there was some money that was put into parking and stuff, so I'm not quite sure what you want...
Oh, no, I just, I just would like to clarify. I mean, the budget for the field has not been approved yet from Langford?
Right.
For Westshore Park and Rack?
I don't know the exact numbers.
So, no, no, and I just, they're, they basically have been quoted as saying that they paid for two fields, and they don't wish to contribute anything more to a field at Royal Bay. So, I just wanted to confirm if that was true or not true, and...
So, I think, I think our Secretary Treasurer emailed you back that answer today, correct?
I got a voicemail from him.
Because I've got it in my email, if you want me to read it out to you.
No, I didn't get an email from him at all.
Okay, well, why don't I read it out, exactly what he said to you, and then you'll have the answer.
We apologize, Wendy, for bringing you into this meeting today.
So, we have a joint use agreement for the Gaudi Field that we pay compensation for and that Langford helped in the acquisition cost of additional land required at the Glenlake site, so that's your answer.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay.
I'm done.
At this point, I bid to stay out of the political arena. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much, folks. We are going to be entering into sort of the main part of the business, so I will give those guests who might have other pressing things to do this evening, like dinner and stuff, get on their way. "To flee," as Councillor Logan says. Thanks very much for coming. Cindy, thank you again, and congratulations. Thanks, Steve. Okay, moving in then to adoption of our regular meeting of council February 24 minutes. So moved. All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carried? Looking to receive a series of minutes? Cycling Advisory Committee minutes of February 3rd, Planning and Land Use Committee minutes of February 18th, Heritage Commission and St. John the Baptist Church Management Committee January 15th, and Transportation and Public Infrastructure, February 3rd. Can I proceed?
Second.
All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carried? We have a couple of, three items here in regards to correspondence requiring council direction. First is a letter from Mayor Wayne Wright, City of New Westminster, in regards to the recent amendments to Canada Post system. The letter was included in our packages, and they are asking for support in writing to the federal government to deal with the issue of the residential door-to-door postal delivery changes. Is it, do we need to make our own resolution, or just whether or not we're supporting the resolution that's here?
It's up to council to determine if they want to support the request from New Westminster to pass a similar resolution, or of course, a resolution of your own, or just to receive the information.
So, there is a number of wherestes and further be resolved. At the end, it is, as noted above, the City of New Westminster requests that the federal government direct Canada Post to maintain the current system of residential door-to-door postal delivery in Canada. We look forward to your action on this matter. What is council's direction? Councillor Day?
Thanks. I'd like to see our council support the resolution. I think they've crafted a good resolution in support of door-to-door delivery, which I realize it is a complicated issue, but my husband did work his entire career for Canada Post, and I can tell you that there are a number of people in our community who benefit from door-to-door delivery, and in fact, they are even still the go-to people, even if you hire a different delivery company. Quite often, that is processed through Canada Post as well. So, there's a huge level of service within our community, and there's also an employer that is within our community. Many people who live in our community work through them, and I think it's important to support an industry within our community. There's huge amounts of land and assets that have been used to maintain it as Crown Corporation for years, and certainly, there are some scary implications of pulling back to maintaining it, what started as a service available to citizens, being maintained simply as whatever is profitable.
Other members of council? I will read out the one section here. "And whereas this proposed change would entail the downloading of responsibilities, costs, and liabilities to local governments, including requirements for municipal land and rights of way, infrastructure such as paving and lighting, and policing related to vandalism, graffiti, and mail theft," is one of their key highlights in there. Anyone else saying none, call yes before I go there?
Thank you through the Chair to the Director of Finance, maybe, I'm not sure, it should be the CAO, but do we have any idea what these costs are going to be for our residents, or for us as council? I don't know what the order of magnitude is. No idea, okay.
Councillor Day?
Well, I can only speak to a very small part of what the order of magnitude of costs are, but in maintaining superboxes, for example, there's been huge costs involved with having to continuously replace them due to vandalism. There's been mail theft, there's been identity theft associated with supermailboxes and the problems associated with them. And we do have a significant amount of Callwood who is receiving door-to-door service.
One of those superbugs that was stolen out of Sanich was found just down Wishart, laying in the ditch there about a month and a half ago, so, empty, of course. So, we do need a motion brought forward here in some capacity as to what to do with this. Councillor Day, were you looking to make that motion?
Sure, I'm trying to think of how to word it. I would move that the City of Callwood support the resolution from the City of New Westminster and send a letter to the federal government and FCM of support.
Second or second? Any further conversation, discussion? Call the question, all those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries? Item number 6.2, again, a letter, this time from Shane Campbell, President and Executive Director, Settlers Rail and Trails, request for City of Callwood flag for Argyle Museum and the Canadian Flag Collection. Again, I need direction on this. We do have a flag that is available for us to send through to this museum. We, I think there was a link to the Canadian Flag Collection, and what they're trying to do is collect a municipal flag from all available municipalities across the country.
Madam Mayor, I would move that we supply a flag to the Settlers Rails and Trails Argyle Museum.
Second.
Conversation, discussion? Councillor Martin?
Just real quick, has any staff member or has anybody actually looked into the legitimacy of this? Like, is this an actual real museum with real flags? Who goes to a flag museum? Obviously not. Like, is it, seriously? This is...
It's in Argyle, Manitoba.
Legitimate? Okay.
I'll have you know that my father's military and my grandfather's military uniforms are in a museum in Manitoba as well, so there's many small museums in Manitoba.
Councillor Sullivan?
Thank you. I'm just curious as to, since we are going through a rebranding of our city's logo, et cetera, as to whether or not we're going to update our flag and which flag we're going to be sending.
I'd kind of like to, for them to have our first one, and maybe we can add a second at a time down the road. Anyone else? Call the question, all those in favor? Did you have something to add to it, though, Pat, just on legitimacy? Because we did do that.
I did do some research, and it is a museum that does have a Canadian flag section within the museum. But I did want to just mention, in addition to hoping that the city would provide them with a flag, and they are aware that we are going through a rebranding and our flag is going to change, but we do have the current flags in stock. They, the policy allows us to either gift or lend for a certain period of time. It also allows us to allow people to purchase. They all have to sign the etiquette protocol policy. I just need to know from council if you're willing to gift it or allow them to have it free of charge or for charge. I think their intention is to try to obtain it for no charge, but that's part of the decision that council has to make as well. And with respect to the new flags, we're just, we're not quite there yet with the actual look and design of the new flag, so we are still going to work with our current Callwood flag for a period of time still.
So, add to your motion around the...
I was considering at no cost, because we did already have the flag here.
And a second on that? We have? You got a second on that one? Okay. Any further questions, comments? Call the question then. All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carried? There you... Well, you got...
the museum, but I did want to just mention, in addition to hoping that the city would provide them with a flag, and they are aware that we are going through a rebranding and our flag is going to change, but we do have the current flags in stock. They, the policy allows us to either gift or lend for a certain period of time. It also allows us to allow people to purchase. They all have to sign the etiquette protocol policy. I just need to know from council if you're willing to gift it, or allow them to have it free of charge, or for charge. I think their intention is to try to obtain it for no charge, but that's part of the decision that council has to make as well. And with respect to the new flags, we're just, we're not quite there yet with the actual look and design of the new flag, so we are still going to work with our current Callwood flag for a period of time still.
So, add to your motion around the...
I was considering at no cost, because we did already have the flag here.
And a secondor on that? We have? You got a secondor on that one? Okay. Any further questions, comments? Call the question then. All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carried? There you go. Well, you got happy answers. Item 6.3, memorandum from Chief Administrative Officer, letter from the Capital Regional District Board requesting an amendment to the West Shore Parks and Rec Society Constitution.
I just want to bring to council's attention that this letter that is addressed to Counselor Rob Martin was predominantly put into this report because there was another letter forthcoming directing to council itself. Many of the other municipalities were not participating in council deliberations this week, so I chose to provide this exact duplicate, other than the title to which it was addressed to. This speaks to an issue of a pecuniary conflict of interest. The BC Court of Appeal last January 2013 found that two Salt Spring Island trustees were found in conflict of interest due to their roles on a non, not-for-profit organization. And as a result, the CRD has talked to the director that sits on the West Shore Park and Rec Society to resign his position, furthermore, asking that the bylaws that create the opportunity for membership on that society board to be amended to allow for a community member to be representative for that electoral area. Furthermore, as part of their recommendation, I'm suggesting that the West Shore Parks Rec Society be requested to amend their constitution to require that all members of the society board be non-elected officials, just to take away that pecuniary conflict of interest, or even the perception of conflict of interest.
I think we can perhaps recommend that, but the whole Board of Governance thing is in question right now anyway, so I wouldn't want to impede the opportunity for this section and contributor to the West Shore Parks and Rec be hampered or hindered in participating any further. He has not been at the board table for some time because of this whole, where are we? Just about a year, I guess, there, which, you know, I mean, although there is, although they're a large area with a small contribution, he is a one-person entity, so there is no alternate, there is no, no offside, you know, person. Here at the table, we have two members of our council who sit at West Shore Parks and Rec, and when it comes down to those budgetary decision-making processes, both excuse themselves from this table in order to, you know, remain uncompromised in making that decision. For Mike, there's no ability for him to do that, so this has been addressed at the CRD board, and then the CRD board has supported it moving in that direction, and so this is kind of the, the follow-through. So I imagine all councils that are participatory members of West Shore Parks and Rec will be seeing this in the next short while, so. Counselor Logan?
Thank you, worship. Well, this is certainly an unfortunate consequence of that ruling, and it's, the CRD's act is similar to what they've taken on Crest as well. So what they've said is that their three regional directors, who are shareholders, are no longer permitted to serve as directors on Crest, and Director Hicks had stepped down about six months ago as a result, and the, the two remaining have since stepped down for those very reasons, so they're, I believe they're looking for, although the, the three directors still hold the share of Crest for the CRD, they're looking at non-elected representation on, on the board. And it really calls into question, you know, some of, some of the ramifications on municipal, municipal representatives on the board, and I see Pat kind of giving me the, no, okay.
If I may, through the mayor, it raises that issue, whether or not members of that society board being elected officials with the city council here need to be a part of this discussion, or should we be asking them to leave the room? Which further complicates the whole governance issue about the West Shore Parks and Rec Society, and I believe by taking politics out of the day-to-day operations, there may be further benefits on that productive relationship moving forward. But what I am asking is for council minus Counselor Martin and Day to participate in that discussion and vote, and to support their, their motion by CRD to make that amendment to allow for that electoral district of the CRD to be replaced by a non-elected official, such as community. And, and if council so chooses to further make the amendment that all participating members sit on, that sit on the society board be community members. We are a little bit different from our, our members that are just adjacent to us. City of Langford, I believe, have four elected officials on that board, so that would leave a bigger question for them as to conflict of interest and not having established quorum at council. But, so the question I do have is for Counselor Day and to Counselor Martin, whether or not we need to declare conflict and be a part of this discussion, or, or leave.
Yeah, probably we should leave this discussion.
No money involved. It really has, it really falls to the, the matter of money. We're not having a discussion around money. It's not about budget, it's not about anything that's of value, it's about a governance and policy thing. But Pat, do you have alternate information?
I think it's a really difficult decision, because my understanding is by being a director of the West Shore Parks and Recreation Board, your obligation is to the board before it's to council, which means even the information that you have or talk about or share at the board level is not information that you're able to come back with and even share with your council. So that is what leads to some of our other complications when it comes to budget issues, because now they bring their budget forward that needs council approval, and two of you have to leave the room. Hopefully, we still have quorum in order to keep that going. So my understanding is to err on the side of caution, the board members should be protecting their own interests by any time there's anything that's coming up that is to do with the West Shore Parks and Recreation Board at the council table. You shouldn't participate or vote on the issue, and if you can't participate and you can't vote, you shouldn't be in the room for the discussion.
Leaving.
With that, just before Counselor Martin, please, I just had a question, because what I heard was that as, as members of the board, that our duty is to the board, but we were elected to council, so how is it that the board, somehow my appointment to the board supersedes my duty to council?
It's not to do with the board, it's to do with this, well, the society act has a role, and the fact that this new case law that's been put into place since this, how do you say it, Schlenker versus Torgrimson lawsuit. So in the background, we have Francesca Marzare, who is a solicitor with Young Anderson, is actually working with the Union of British Columbia Municipalities, as well as the provincial government, to try to have regulation put into place that provides exemptions. And exemptions would apply in situations like ours, where we have a nonprofit society that is actually intended, it, it's an extension of the local government bodies, and so this rule shouldn't apply to us, because it's not an outside agency of which you sit on their board. We are the agency, and it's our board. So how long that regulation will take to get into place, though, is the difficulty? In the meantime, her recommendation is to protect your interests.
Okay, then I'm prepared to declare a potential conflict.
I am also declaring a potential conflict, and I am leaving the chambers.
Yeah, you'll just get outside the door there.
I saw a video, that's how you do it.
Yeah.
He passed.
If I may, Mayor, I, I see the same value in exclusion for these sort of discussions when there's financial matters to be discussed. This is a gray issue, this is, you know, it's very gray, it's very new and fresh into politics in BC, and it's something we're trying to find our way through. Very difficult, but I, I think moving forward, I think the suggested resolutions to be provided to the, the society board would alleviate this issue, given the amount of time that it would take to change the legislation.
And I know, you know, there are communities within our province who have suffered through budget situations because of this, because of not having quorum at the table to be able to, to go through, so they've had to remove themselves from the various boards, which sets up a whole nother problem. In those small communities, sometimes you are multitasking. So can you, for the benefit of those of us who are left behind to make the decision, reread the motion that you have, or resolution that you have there?
Sure. The following resolution is offered for consideration, that the Municipal Council of the City of Callwood support the Capital Regions, Regional Districts Board, February 28, 2014, request to the West Shore Parks and Recreation Society to amend their constitution to allow for a citizen representative to be appointed as a director to represent this Wanda Fuka elector area on the West Shore Parks and Recreation Society Board, and that the West Shore Parks and Recreation Society be requested to amend their constitution to require that all members of the society board be non-elected officials.
Move and a shaker?
I'll move it.
No, Counselor Collins has a comment here, a question?
I'm, I'm comfortable with the first half, and the reason I'm uncomfortable with the second half is I know there's sort of discussions around how they're constituting themselves, and I just, I'm, I don't know the answer to, is it timely, is it appropriate? I'm feeling like they're kind of two different pieces. One is, is a very simple piece, and so I would move the first half of the motion, but I'd like to, to do it in, in two pieces, because I'm, I'm not yet comfortable with the second half.
Would it have any comfort to you if, in that section, because I have same kind of concerns on there, that the West Shore Parks and Recreation Society be requested to consider amending their constitution to require that all members of the society board be non-elected officials? Then it leaves it in the conversation, and it leaves it still at the table, where it has to have that?
It's not a direction.
It's certainly easier language. I still, I would still feel comfortable splitting it in two.
So that it doesn't become a one condition on two kind of thing? Okay? Yeah, I'm happy, I'm happy to do it in, in two parts, so... I'll move part one. So Counselor Collington will move part one. Secondor, Counselor Lukens? Any further conversation table-wise? No? Call the question, all those in favor? Opposed? Motion carried? And then the second part? Add in the word, in there? To consider amending their constitution? Does that work? Or you have something stronger?
No, I think that, I think that, I'm, I'm more comfortable with that.
Okay, so the second one then would read that the West Shore Parks and Recreation Society be requested to consider amending their constitution to require that all members of the society board be non-elected officials? Do we need to add to avoid these board problems, or just leave it in there and it's simple? I'm, I'm good with it the way it is. Counsel? No! No, no, she's pointing at you.
Thank you through the chair to the CAO. I was just wondering if inserting the word "consider" there in, in that second part of the resolution actually weakens it considerably?
We're only one of a number of partners. We can't demand that they make those changes. It has to be collaborative, so at least we're putting it out there that it...
If you don't mind, through the chair from, to the CAO, do you know what other municipalities in the region are doing with respect to this?
Through the mayor to Counselor Sullivan, I'm not aware of what the other municipalities are currently doing. I know some of the, the smaller municipalities are going to be in a difficult situation in that they only have one elected official that is appointed to the society board. I, I think there's a greater governance issue here at play, and I, I think we cannot forget the day-to-day operations of this valuable asset to our communities that I, I believe must be at forefront here. And I, I think in order to alleviate some of the, the political wranglings and, you know, the sensitivities that arise at the operational table, if we remove those that are elected, the community members at large will have a significant opportunity to provide better value for our taxpayers in the region, and keep some of the, the potential conflict and other discussions around at the owner's table. I would further suggest that maybe rather than have mayors sit around at the owner's table, that it be the CAOs that report to their respective councils, and it would align with our, our governance model somewhat more than what this society board has set up, but that's only my opinion, but I believe that this is a first step for that transition.
Counselor Logan?
Thank you, worship, through you to the CAO. What about the accountability factor? So you take the elected representation off the board, and with it goes the accountability factor, so to speak, and that's one of the biggest complaints with the CRD, as an example.
Well, there's accountability, but ultimately, any sort of budget approvals, new investments for new capital, must come back through their respective membership. The accountability lies in that process. You can indicate a reporting structure to your appointed community persons, that, you know, maybe every quarter you come back and report to council based on the activities and new services and programs that the center is providing.
Thank you. Any further conversation, discussion? Call the question then on the second, or do we have mover and shaker on that one?
I'll be a mover.
Just a second?
You need a secondor then?
I'll second.
One second. Counselor Lukent? Call the question then, all those in favor? Opposed? Motion carried? Do you want to just grab the folks there? And, actually, we should. This is where we jump, folks, to Transportation and Public Infrastructure. Item 7.2.1 will become the top of our discussion. The secret. Counselor Collington?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So this item is regarding the project at Wishart and Candale, and as you know, our staff have been working on all kinds of interesting things up there, including the, the realignment of Candale Road, installation of bike lanes and sidewalks, flashing pedestrian signal, the crosswalk, the landscape, the rain garden, the trees. But the project did run over budget, which is why it's currently stalled. So this, excuse me, this report came to, to TPI to talk about what happened and why, and look at some of the options moving forward. So there's actually a lot of good news out of this. So staff took the, the initiative to, to do quite a lot of this interesting thing. So this was probably one of the first projects of its kind that was built by our public works staff, and they took, took the opportunity to include a, a training exercise as a part of it. So for example, we now have some of our crews who can do the concrete curbs and sidewalks, which is something that they, they couldn't do before. And it was also set out as a, a kind of a motivational piece. In other words, if we're getting our folks building these things, they also then take ownership of it, and take, you know, they're more likely to kind of be very involved in, you know, pulling out of weed as they go past the rain garden or, or whatever. And of course, in the long time, it's hopefully going to provide us with some efficiencies, because we've got our crews trained up to, to do some of the work that needs to happen in various different locations around the, the city. We originally had a budget of about $97,000 out of gas tax, but it did go over budget for a couple of reasons. One is that because of the training component, that went ahead, but it was then realized that we couldn't pay that out of the gas tax, so that has to come from a different source. There is, there was also a lot of work, additional work, unforeseen work, that happened on the project in terms of making sure the kids got to school safely, so we, we hired some temporary flag folks, because of course it's a, you know, a route to school, and, and the crews were working really hard to make sure that there was always a, a safe sidewalk going through. So, and there was also a bit of a, a perfect storm in terms of, of sort of people coming and going, a deputy engineer who is new... going, a deputy engineer who was new into the position, our manager of Public Works who wasn't, who's away on LTD at the moment, and a Public Works crew who's not, you know, wasn't experienced at kind of managing the budget side of this. So when I get to the recommendations, you will see that there's one of the recommendations looking at kind of making sure that this doesn't happen again. And I, you know, I mean, I guess it's fair to say there was some concern expressed at committee that, you know, that this had happened, but at the same time, also opinions expressed that, you know, if we're going to encourage our folks to take on new roles and encourage innovation and try some new things, then we will make mistakes from time to time, and so it's important not to get bogged down, but to kind of learn from it and go forward. Before I get into the kind of the go-forward piece, Michael, did you want to?
Yeah, I just wanted to apologize to council. I should have seen that with Dan off on LTD and the changes in engineering, there was a chance that the ball got dropped, and I should have checked that. The ball got dropped in two places, really. The first one is that the budget was wrong. You know, the eventual price to build it is very similar to what we'd expect the contractor to build it for. In fact, we went, we priced everything here for the, in the revised budget proposal, as if it was being built by a contractor, and that seems to be matching what Public Works is building it for. With the caveat that Public Works was doing a job on safety that I've never seen any contractor do, and that we will be demanding on future jobs that kind of standard. And the other place that the ball got dropped is that we didn't pick up on the fact that the budget was wrong and we were heading over it early enough, and that's a lack of monitoring, and I apologize for that.
So we have from committee a series of recommendations, and I just wanted to sort of explain them before I kind of launch into moving them individually. So the first one deals with the intersection itself and the works immediately around that. So we originally had, and hopefully this chart that I just got passed around will help us a little bit. So if you look at the intersection of Candale and Wishart, we originally had $97,000 approved out of the gas tax, and the first recommendation looks, and our actual total cost will be in the order of $128,000 to complete that. So that shortfall is proposed to come from two different sources. One is that $18,000 would come out of the training budget reserve, so that takes into account the work that was related to training of our Public Works crews, and that the remaining $13,000, rather than asking for more gas tax, we would look at that coming out of probably the overlay budget or another part of the existing Public Works budget as appropriate. So that's what that first recommendation deals with. The second recommendation talks about the other piece of the project that we were hoping to complete at this time, and that's a sidewalk from Candale through to Ackland. So we had originally approved that, and we'd given it a budget of $30,000 out of gas tax. Staff came back to us and said, "That budget is actually significantly under. The real cost is much closer to $107,000." So if we want to complete that, we would have to find another $77,000 from somewhere. That could be gas tax. There is a little bit of money in the sidewalk fund, $21,000, but, you know, at least some of it would have to come from gas tax. The other piece of the puzzle that committee looked at was, in addition to what we had earlier talked about, but it would make the project very complete, and that is to complete the sidewalk between Ackland and Wishart School. So you'd then have sidewalk all the way along. But we hadn't allowed anything previously in our budget, and we are looking at an additional $56,000 to do that work. So you can see that, you know, we went from a project of $127,000 to, if we were to add in the Ackland piece, to getting close to $300,000 for that. There is money in the gas tax, but obviously it would come out of other projects, and at this moment in time, the Kelly Suk Road project is the one that's got the flexibility around it. And then the final recommendation deals with making sure we're doing this right going forward and not running over budget. So I would like to do this as a series of motions, and the first one, there is an error in there. It says in here will result in a total spending of $110,000 from gas tax. That should, I believe, say $97,000 from gas tax. Okay? So it was recommended by committee, and I so moved, that the 2014 budget be modified to reassign $13,000 in Public Works and Engineering budget to complete the pavings and plantings of the main intersection at Wishart and Candale with early budget approval, which will result in a total spending of $97,000 in gas tax on this project over two years, plus $18,000 paid out of the training budget reserves.
Second.
Discussion, council? Councillor Lukens?
Thank you, your worship. Just a question. If we're taking that money out of the training budget, what is that going to mean? What's the impact to the department?
That's actually out of a reserve from last year's training budget. It won't impact this year's training budget.
Okay, thank you. Councillor Day, sorry?
Thanks, no problem. For this $18,000 in training costs, we were saying that this, the budgets, which weren't correct to begin with, but have now been upsized, shall we say, are approximately equal to the contract price where we to go out to tender on these items. But we're spending money on training our staff to do this. So I'm just wondering, will there be cost savings in the future over what it would cost us to go out to contract on this type of initiative? Because I'm just wondering whether we should continue with this type of projects in-house, or if, you know, spending this $18,000, what is the value that we're getting from it if we're not going to continue down this road of doing these types of projects in-house?
In general, it's a good idea to let Public Works crews, who normally do nothing but maintenance, do some construction, because it's very motivational, and it also involves them in the business of building things they've got to maintain, so there's a certain amount of pride that comes with that. But how far you carry that depends on, you know, whether we can prove to be more economical than contractors or less. And one of the things that will be different this year is that the spending on equipment will be better taken into account, which, you know, by the time we've taken all these real costs into account, we need to either get slightly better at building these, or council may decide that they want to do the vast majority of it with contractors.
And if I could just follow up on that, $18,000 seems like a lot of money for training. Can you just give us a bit of an idea how that is broken down?
I don't have the breakdown, but I know that it involved having extra staff on site for several whole days while they did various portions of the concrete sidewalk and the concrete curb. They currently do asphalt curbing. They're all, you know, we have the skills on board to do that, but we hadn't done any concrete curbing. And of course, there's several phases to that, so they're on site for multiple days.
And just one last small follow-up, and that was just in regards of the budget. The table that was handed out about the intersection and the other options shows $97,000 from gas tax, $18,000 from training, and it also refers to another $13,000, which, for a grand total of $128,000 for the intersection at Kerandale and Wishart. And I'm just wondering what that $13,000 is for that's...
Oh, what it's, I guess that's part of the overage cost, including the temporary flag folks?
Well, the training is in the $18,000. The $13,000 non-training is basically what the budget was out by.
And the intention in this motion is that that money come from existing Public Works budgets? So no implication to taxpayers, no implication to the gas tax?
Okay, thank you. Councillor Martin?
Thank you. First of all, I just want to appreciate the city engineer and his apology. That means a lot. I'm being serious, I'm not being sarcastic or anything. The question I have, though, is everybody makes, you know, we always, I mean, overruns are overruns, and that's just the way things happen. I guess my question is, I didn't really understand what we're doing differently now that we've had this, and we understand that we've had these issues and that. Moving forward, how are we anticipating that we're going to be changing our behaviors?
And there's a part of the series of resolutions that deals with that, but basically it amounts to having a system that everybody understands, not just a couple of guys at the top understand, that is a paper system instead of, you know, the sort of seat-of-the-pants way it was done in the past, which, when we were smaller and doing a lot less, you know, and you had the old guy in charge, whether it was on our side or the Public Works side, you know, we came in on budget repeatedly. I mean, we brought Well Road in on budget, $3 million project, and it was the fact that the staff changed and there was no paper system that they could be introduced to. I think that's basically where we failed to make the changeover.
Councillor Lukens?
Through yourself, your worship, I'd like to just ask the Director of Finance that she's comfortable that we've got the checks and balances in place going forward with respect to, you know, any projects that would be approved. And I know it's in here about, you know, assisting in the costing, et cetera, but that we've got the checks and balances in place going forward so that we're not incurring this type of overrun, because I can tell you it was a surprise to me when I read this in the TPI report, and I was really excited about this when we approved it and, you know, all those sorts of things. I do understand accidents and overruns do happen. It was just a little above what I anticipated. So I just want to know from finance that they have what they need in order to be able to support engineering and the team moving forward.
Yes, I'm confident that we do going forward.
Any further conversation? We have a series of recommendations there. Councillor Collington, are you taking them one off at a time, or? Okay, so let's move in.
So the first one has been moved and seconded.
Yep. And you've got a new number on that one, $110?
Now says $97.
Yes. So call the question on the first one? All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carried?
Thank you. So the second motion coming out of TPI relates to the sidewalk between Kerandale and Ackland. As I mentioned, we had originally approved $30,000 under the gas tax. It looks like the real cost is $107,000, so considerable difference. So if we would like to see this piece completed, we will be looking for an additional $77,000 to fund that. $21,000 of that could come from the sidewalk fund, and there is a little bit of money in the overlay budget, or there is gas tax available. There was discussion at committee, I think, you know, notwithstanding the cost, I think a sense from committee that it's a project we'd started and we really would like to see sort of moving forward to completion, at least as far as Ackland. So it was recommended by committee, and I so move, that the 2014 budget be modified to reassign an additional $77,000 in gas tax funding from the Kelly Suk Road project for a total budget of $107,000 for construction of a sidewalk from the existing Wishart-Kerandale project to Ackland Road with early budget approval.
Second or?
Second.
Discussion? Councillor Logan?
Thank you, your worship. Although I did oppose the recommendation coming from, out of committee, and I did voice my concerns at that time, and I'm not going to reiterate what they were at this time, but my big concern was that, again, we're targeting a specific fund, the gas tax fund, and a specific project in an area that is in dire need of some help, and that's the Kelly Suk area. And it's one of our goals, you know, to fix up that area and that transportation network, and we seem to rob that area all the time. So that was my reason for opposing it, but I do strongly support that connection as it's a significant route to school, and currently that section between the end of our project and to Ackland has, doesn't even have an asphalt curb, and that was one of the reasons why I had pushed for it in the initial project scope. So we did have some discussion about the sidewalk fund, and the CAO did have some language after that we had voted on the motion, that could incorporate the sidewalk fund as an alternative, or as at least a source of funding, rather than targeting the gas tax fund right off the bat. So before I asked James perhaps if he had some suggested wording, I did have some questions, or a question about the sidewalk fund to the Director of Finance, and she may not be able to be in a position to answer it tonight, but I understood that there was more than $21,000 in the sidewalk fund, so I was curious as to what expenditures we've made out of that fund. I was under the impression we had, you know, upwards of $200,000.
Some of the projects that were previously approved for funding from gas tax were switched in the budget process to be funded from sidewalk instead. So I think the balance I calculated for Deputy to the City Engineer was about $21,000 left after those budget decisions were made.
Okay, thank you. James, did you have some alternative wording then to include it?
Through the Mayor to councillor Logan, it was very simple. It was the 2014 budget be modified to reassign an additional $77,000 in funding from the existing budget for a total of $107. So it put it back in the onus of staff to find alternative solutions from just the gas tax in funding for this specific project.
So I would, I'd be happy to make that, move that as an amendment if it's appropriate, your worship.
Second or? I'll second it. Discussion on the amendment?
We can't really do that, because I have a budget document that already reflects these recommendations, which is why it's coming first. So the recommendations in the staff report as being funded from gas tax and/or money that was put into a training reserve at 2013 year-end, et cetera, are all reflected in this budget document, which is hopefully going to receive first, second, third reading tonight. So I think we need to be more clear, and the staff recommendation I do not have a problem with as to funding source.
Councillor Collington?
Thank you. That actually was sort of the question that I had, in that I... That actually was sort of the question that I had, in that I actually have sort of no problem leaving it in the hands of staff to find the best sources of funding, but how does that work with the budget process? And I'm wondering through the chair, slightly looking at Counselor Logan, whether we should at very least kind of minimize the ask out of the gas tax fund by, at very least, directing the sidewalk funds to cover part of that cost.
Yep.
So, perhaps we... If you... I don't know if you wanted to kind of withdraw the motion, put a new one on the table, or...
We can just vote down and redo it.
How you wanted to vote it down and redo?
Well, I'll just withdraw mine, then. It makes it easier.
To the mayor, you know, the alternate, and I would direct this question to the Director of Finance. What would the impact be if we were to table that next resolution on the five-year budget? What would the impact do for timelines?
It would put us back significantly because staff are already heavily involved in audit the year-end, the parcel tax panel, calculating the parcel tax rate, as well as the user fee. So, if we have to continue to focus on the budget for at least the next two council meetings and that delay our budget to about the end of... Middle to the end of April, our statutory deadline is fourteen of May.
Counselor Cullington?
So, I would move an amendment to the motion, which says be modified to reassign an additional seventy-seven thousand in funding, including twenty-one thousand... Twenty-one dollars, I wish. Twenty-one thousand dollars from the sidewalk fund and forty-six thousand from the gas tax fund.
I will second that.
Currently assigned to the Kelly-Souk project, et cetera.
Forty... Forty-six? Or fifty-six? Forty?
Fifty-six. My apologies. Can't do math. Thank you. To the Director of Finance, thank you for covering my butt.
Just...
Counselor Day?
A question on that another way around, having to change all the numbers that are in an item that's already been included in the agenda tonight, would be to direct the twenty-one thousand dollars in the sidewalk fund to the Kelly and Souk Road improvements, which definitely will include sidewalk. I mean, that's one of the big issues there as well. It just... There's more than one way to skin a cat.
Yeah, I'm concerned by any alteration on here, where... What position it puts us going forward for the balance of, you know, for those bylaws that are coming up.
Counselor Martin?
I don't care where the money comes from. It seems like we're just sort of moving. We're playing a shell game here. With that, I guess I have a different question, though, and I need to clarify it. We approved thirty thousand dollars. Was that the original budget, or was that that we were just putting... So, like, are we saying the budget is two-hundred, three-hundred percent off? Is that what we're saying? That's a little more than...
Yeah, the proposal to build that sidewalk came up during a TMPI meeting, and I suspect that the budget was sort of thrown about in that meeting and never updated. And that's where the problem came in, that, you know, you come up off the top of your head in the meeting with a number, but then when you actually go and look at, you know, the standard to which we're doing these things with landscaping and everything, I mean, you could probably build the sidewalk for some number close to that, but not the curbs and the landscaping and everything.
So, I'm sorry. How are we then... Through the chair, to our director. How are we catching this then in the future? Because that just seems like that's a huge difference in a budget. Terry, like, and I understand overruns and all that, but that's a huge underestimation of a project, and I understand staffing and all that kind of stuff, but that just... I mean, we should have some expertise on something like that, the cost was.
Yeah, basically, the process was too informal. We need a more formal process where it goes through more than one person and everybody signs off so that it's checked, instead of, you know, being created in a meeting, and then it's just, you know, nobody checked it.
Through the chair to Counselor Logan, it was my understanding that the Ackland-to-school portion of the project was not previously approved, that that is a new ask? So, when you're looking at the almost three-hundred thousand dollars, it involves that ask. So, I know it's still not appropriate to have a two-hundred percent increase on estimation, but we do take out that fifty-six thousand dollars. There was errors in the calculation on the estimation. You know, I would like to see further benchmarking of this sort of activity. If we're going to undertake these activities internally, that we ask other municipalities and contractors and have a running cost total, benchmarking of sorts on various different projects, whether it be concrete or asphalt. And I understand the significance of doing it internally when there's a lack of contractors, you know, in concrete. You know, it's very hard to get them for small projects. So, there is that advantage on the short term and long term by our employees being engaged and learning this process technique, albeit there were errors made, and I do applaud staff for taking that responsibility and not pointing blame elsewhere. But there are other things that we can do, such as benchmarking, financial reporting, variance reporting as well. The Director made the suggestion to have quarterly reporting, and I further commented that staff have availability of these reports monthly, and there should be more accountability onto the Directors to provide that information on the variances back to the Directors so that we're working more of a team on this process in effort to be more accurate on our estimation.
How the city... I take full responsibility.
No, it's Chris's fault.
So, we are at... Get out of here, this thing won't get out. There we go. Looking...
Okay.
Yeah. So, we have an amendment on the floor. Pardon? It is... Go Gordy on that one, again.
The amendment on the floor deals with, instead of taking seventy-seven thousand from gas tax, taking twenty-one thousand of that from the sidewalk budget. I have a question through the chair to the Director of Finance in terms of what does that... Does that mess up the budget for tonight? In which case, I would consider withdrawing the motion. I thought Counselor Day had a sensible suggestion, which would allow us to move forward with the original motion as presented.
No, as long as the tangible capital assets in the five-year bylaw do not change, and as long as the other... Sorry, I can't see. As long as the grouping of the revenue do not change, then we're okay. Because the gas... The deferred revenue for gas tax and the sidewalk fund are both deferred revenue. So, whether you take it from gas tax or sidewalk, it's the dollar value. If the dollar value changes, then the budget document changes.
I'm visualizing the clock in Marcy's video.
Yes, I agree. Okay. My motion stands.
Call the question then on the amendment. All those in favor? Opposed? Motion does carry? So, do we just... What do we have to do with our main motion, then?
Main motion as amended?
Main motion as amended? Kind of like passing it twice? So, main motion as amended? All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries?
Okay. Third resolution. So, shut my mic off, that doesn't help. The third resolution then is a piece that was not considered previously. It is the sidewalk from Ackland Road right through to Wishart Elementary School. The pros of that are it would fully complete the project and provide that safe route to school. So, certainly something that we would want to see happen. The question for council is, do you want to see it happen sort of now, this year, as part of this project, and take the money out of gas tax, which is fifty-six thousand dollars? Or you can choose to vote it down, in which case it will reappear down the road in a... As a future wish. So, it was recommended by committee, and I so move that the 2014 budget be modified to reassign an additional fifty-six thousand in gas tax funding from the Kelly-Souk project for construction of a sidewalk from Ackland Road, too, but not including the Wishart Elementary School frontage with early budget approval.
Second.
Second.
Discussion?
Yes. Counselor Martin?
Just really quickly, I just want to make sure we're comfortable with all these numbers now, that these numbers should be fairly accurate, that we're not going to have a two-hundred percent increase.
Yeah, we don't like to make the same mistake twice.
You get it once.
Yeah.
Any other members of council? Counselor Day?
Thank you. My question was just to what exactly this entails, because from Ackland Road to the school is in front of two houses. From Ackland Road to the sidewalk... Or the crosswalk that goes to the school is two houses and a large parking lot. So, I just want to know... I want to clarify, what does that fifty-six thousand dollars get us? Are we talking about sidewalk in front of two houses?
Yeah, that's sidewalk, curb, landscaping, trees, and a little bit of drainage work.
I think then that is important to support it being finished for a couple of reasons. And one of those reasons is to ensure that the sidewalk area doesn't become a parking area, as is happening in front of a number of other schools in the area where we have the asphalt curbs. People just drive around them and park on top of where the sidewalk area is. So, I think as a safe route to school and maintaining clear sightlines for kids coming and going, cycling and so forth, it's important to finish the project. I will say, though, that I am concerned that what started as, you know, maybe a hundred thousand dollar project has turned into a three-hundred thousand dollar project. And had we known that starting out, we might have chosen a different area to focus on. But let's finish it. Let's make it good, and let's make sure that we get good value for that investment.
Counselor Logan?
If that's the case, I just want to make sure there's not going to be any weeds in there. There's pride in that development now. Don't have to.
Call the question... Any further conversation? Call the question. All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries? And one more?
One final recommendation. This is the piece dealing with the go-forward. Recommended by committee, and I so move that the Engineering Department, with cooperation from the Finance Department, undertakes improvements to estimating and cost tracking in general, and particularly with regard to the Public Works Division.
Need that seconder?
Second.
Any comments, questions?
I think it's all been said.
Yep. Here's where the rubber hits the road. So, with that, all those in favor? Opposed? We can move then back to Finance and Administration. Item 7.1, it is on our current agendas. Report Building Inspector III in regards to 418B Goldstream Work Without Permit.
I would love to speak on this, but I think it's more appropriate that the city engineer Because I saw Pat poking or pointing.
I saw lips moving, but I couldn't read them.
I lost my agenda there in the computer. Yeah, this is a case where a new owner found that the previous owner had cut some roof trusses in the building, which means that the roof will tend to suffer problems over time. And the work was done without a permit. Now, the current owner is just not in a financial position to do anything about this. And although she has had an engineer look at it, so she does have an idea of what the problem is. And in that case, you know, there's no point in the municipality taking an enforcement approach to having the work done, since the roof is functioning for now. It will suffer over the long term. But in order to protect itself, what the municipality can do is to file notice on title so that the property cannot be sold without a new owner knowing that there's a problem. And it's an acknowledgement by both the owner and the municipality that we know there's something wrong there, and that it's the owner's duty to fix it.
I move the recommendation.
Second. Comments, questions from council? Seeing none? Yes?
Just... Our corporate officer at one point said that people could speak on these. Should we ask if the person's in the audience? And are they allowed?
I'm not aware that they affected...
No, no, but...
It's the same thing.
Yeah, yeah. I'm not aware that that...
Person's here?
Person's here, or whatever, in this. It's an unfortunate set of circumstances, that's for sure, in this case, but I see that through the correspondence provided to us that she is looking to resolve this through a number of means.
Carol?
Yes, Counselor Logan?
I guess, you know, and this is probably beyond our scope, but I don't know how long ago she bought the property, but I believe that if something wasn't disclosed during the purchase, because you're supposed to disclose any of that, that she would have some recourse from, you know, the sale perspective. So, she may want to entertain that as well.
Yeah, it's in here. She bought the home in November, and she's trying to get compensation to correct this issue, none of which was ever disclosed to me on the non-disclosure nor picked up by the inspector. So, I know of another incident close to where I live where a similar situation occurred, and they were successful. It was a bit of a battle, but they were eventually successful in getting compensation for the damage that was apparent in there. So, with that, call the question that is before us in that recommendation. All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carried? The next item is, again, work without permit, request for notice. We do have the individuals in the audience here. This is the 2997 Charlotte location. Again, do we want to have introduction from you, Michael, and then we can have the folks speak to it?
So, this revolves around some safety issues regarding the creation of a suite. And these safety issues all arise out of the code requirements for a suite, and some of them are fire-related issues, so, you know, they're important to life safety. And I gather that the notice on title is being considered because of the length of time that this issue has not received sufficient attention to resolve it. But I gather that the applicant would like to address that part of the matter this evening. Um, but I gather that the, uh, the applicant, uh, would like to address that part of the matter this evening.
Do we have specific questions to this individual, or do you want to hear more, council? Question? Anything that you want to say on this one, Andre?
Yes, uh, I suppose I do have to have the VHA inspection for, to, for the permit to proceed. So I have not had, uh, the final inspection from VHA. The field will be done by the end of the month. To, technically, I don't have a permit according to your law, your standards, because VHA is supposed to approve before a permit can be issued, if you call it. But I had proceeded wrongfully in doing this suite. The smoke detectors are in place toward, in the whole house, in all the bedrooms. My only question is, the smoke detector that has to go into the furnace. I've talked to different furnace companies and they believe this does not apply for a residential suite. And as for a conversation that I had with Ron North in July, I asked him about this, telling him that I would be the first one in Victoria to have one. He told me not to push this matter, and I just want to know what that meant. Is that a threat, or? I'm just wondering why this has to be installed. It's a very expensive item, and I'm just curious why? For a residential.
Is there a need for more conversation between this individual and staff before we're at this?
It's not going to do any harm. I don't think there's a tearing hurry here. If, uh, if we can engender some more conversation that might make everybody happy.
Councilor Day?
I'm sure that, uh, if we move forward and maybe staff could give clarification with the recommendation here and subsequently staff and the resident are, are able to, um, resolve those issues, that, um, staff could at any point in time determine that those, uh, requirements have been met and not carry on with putting a, a notice on, on the title, uh, which certainly would be good and beneficial from our point of view. I certainly know that, uh, I don't know the specifics of this case whatsoever or at all, but I know that in my own home, I have, um, a smoke detector in my furnace room just to be extra safe.
Does it shut your furnace off?
I have no idea, couldn't tell you.
This is what it's supposed to do. It's supposed to be inside the furnace.
Yeah, so I'm, as I say, I don't know any of the ins and outs. I'm just saying that I'm quite certain that our staff are, are going to ask for all the right things and, uh, that if they're being complied with, uh, and we have made this resolution here tonight, um, that all the right pieces can still fall into place after, after the deadline.
And I also been asked to pay for a permit to start again for a following year, so I don't understand why. If I apply for, and paid for another permit for another year round, why is this coming to council right now? This is twice I paid for this permit, once last year and been requested, uh, January seventh? To repay for a new permit, and I have.
Councilor Harvey?
Uh, thank you through the chair. I would, uh, most certainly support staff and the applicant getting together and trying to resolve these issues before we actually, uh, go down this road. So defer.
Then we need that.
So, in, in, in that light, I will move to defer this item.
Second. Uh, any further discussion on the deferment? Councilor Day?
Point of clarification, when are we deferring it to? Next council?
Uh, next council will be the twenty-fourth of March. Will that be sufficient time, two weeks to, uh, try and, and work through this?
That should be, uh, no problem for us to have a conversation with the, uh, with the, um, property owner and, uh, come back with something, either saying that there is a timetable for everything to be resolved or, or that there isn't.
Good. Call the question then, all those in favor? Opposed? Motion carried? Thank you, Andre. So, you, that means you are to be in touch with our staff and set that up and we'll talk to you again at the end of the month. Um, third item, report, uh, regarding the twenty-four, fourteen AVICC Annual General Meeting and Conven- Convention. Um, Councilor Martin, are you going to go on this one, or? You're going to hand it off? You were, you were going to, or not?
No, I was not going to.
Okay. Um, so. Yeah. Yep. Well, it's come that time. Um, AVICC is coming up rapidly here in April, um, the eleventh through thirteenth. Traditionally, we've had, um, a couple of members of council attend. Um, last year we were fortunate, we had three. Uh, Councilor Lukin, Day and myself were there in attendance to the event out in Sook. This year it is up in Qualicum Parksville. Um, and so we need to know and be able to register, uh, with this, um, event to, um, ensure that we have some representation there. Uh, so we have a choice before us, um, because it does have some financial implications of where, and the money would come from the council training and, and, uh, conventions, uh, budgets. And the recommendation before you, um, is that approval be, be granted for two members of council to attend the AVICC AGM and convention to be held in Qualicum Beach, Parksville, April eighth, eleventh through thirteenth. Um, approximately two thousand dollars, equalling a thousand dollars per person considering that they're away, uh, taken from the council training conferences, convention fees account. Um, Counselor, uh, Day? Go ahead.
Thanks. Um, I just think, uh, I'll give you a, a brief bit of history. We didn't, uh, used to participate in the Association of Vancouver Island and Coastal Communities chapter of, um, of the Union of British Columbia Municipalities. Uh, for many years, Callwood belonged to the Union of British Columbia Municipalities alone and, um, sort of through a loophole, um, uh, by not submitting resolutions to the Association of Vancouver Island and Coastal Communities. Um, the city of Callwood saved a few hundred dollars every year by not participating. And, uh, what came as a result of that was that there was, um, fewer opportunities for us to network with other Vancouver Island communities. There were fewer opportunities for us to lay any groundwork for any, um, other municipal supporters of, of issues that we wanted to bring to the attention of the provincial government. And, uh, fewer opportunities for us to really, um, gain any traction at the Union of British Columbia Municipalities Annual General Meeting, which, um, council members have been attending, uh, as they were able to over the years. Um, so to sum it up, really, I think it's important. Um, for many years I attended AVICC because other people were not able to through, um, work commitments and otherwise. It, um, it does take you away from home and, uh, does require a considerable amount of time and attention. And, um, you come home tired and overwhelmed with information. Um, but it is really beneficial to the city, um, to have someone advocating for Callwood um, within the Vancouver Island community and learning, um, about other initiatives, uh, nearby. Um, and I think it was very, um, useful for Councilor Lukin's and the mayor and myself when we attended in Sook last year, um, on, as a sideline. Um, that's when I learned to use Twitter, thanks to Councilor Lukin's. Uh, she signed me up, she showed me how to do it, uh, which is great and, uh, still, still, still making use of it. Um, and, uh, I've also had an opportunity to talk to councillors from Asquamalt, councillors from Victoria, uh, to talk about getting island representation, uh, in UBCM. Uh, in fact, the Capital Regional District, um, is very underrepresented, uh, both at AVICC and at UBCM. Um, so, uh, I would just put it out there that, um, if we need to, um, increase the budget to make this, uh, a possibility, if there's enough people who want to, to go, um, uh, I would be in favor of doing that. If council is in favor of only sending, uh, a small delegation of people, I mean, I'm, I'm happy to support whoever wants to go and it really doesn't need to be me. I've gone because someone needed to go in the past. Um, so I, I'm very supportive of, um, people going to this. And the more people we have, the more opportunity we have to actually, um, uh, do some lobbying uh, for the programs and services that the citizens of Callwood, uh, really need us to, um, to implement.
So what I do need is somebody to move and, uh, second this recommendation. And then we should also have a discussion on who those two members will be, um, at that table. So, Councilor Lukin's?
Unfortunately, no, I moved it and Gordy seconded it.
Yeah.
Um, unfortunately, I'm not going to be able to go this year, um, although I have to say I found great value in it last year and absolutely support someone or a couple of people from our council going. Um, it's a lot of work, they're long days, but the speakers were absolutely amazing last year and a real eye-opener on many instances about some of the things that are happening in and around us and impacting us. So it is important that we as a city are represented and that we're able to send, um, a couple of people to it.
Sandra Cullington?
Thank you. I'm also not able to, to attend, um, and what I did want to throw out there is if, um, if we have two councillors able to attend, I think that's, that's fabulous. Um, do we also want to consider the possibility of asking the CAO if he wants to attend? Some or all of it, because I think there may also be value.
We talked about that last year, actually, having, uh, the CAO and the value of, uh, having someone from staff there, so.
Recognizing that he has family obligations to meet as well.
Well, the CAO actually came the year before.
Yeah.
So, that was in that, um, uh, and, and so I'm going to, we've got the mover and, and seconder on there. Um, I would like to, although I've, I've had great, um, experience there. Again, I'm out of town in that weekend, not returning until the thirteenth, so it takes me out of the equation. But there is, uh, a opportunity being built around that same timeframe for communities with economic development to, um, perhaps get together and do some brainstorming and that sort of thing. And so with that, I, I'd like to suggest that Counselor Harvey be considered as, or pardon me, Sullivan. Yeah, that's okay. It's because I had to do her password today and that hasn't been changed. Um, and, uh, it, uh, if she's available, it might be a benefit. It has not been confirmed, um, yet, but it, it would certainly give a great opportunity for her uh, to start a, a network in that field. So, now that she's back to the table, I brought that up to you. So that's the eleventh through the thirteenth of April in Parksville.
I am available.
Okay, so that will be suggestion one, and I will leave it to the table to come up with a second one. Or someone volunteer if, uh, we've heard some nays around here, so.
I recommend Cynthia or Counselor Day and Counselor Sullivan to go, if they're available.
Councilor Day, is that going to work on your schedule too? Okay, so. So we have two, two councillors, uh, names put forward, um, in part of that. So seeing that there and no other takers. Um, Councilor Logan?
Did we decide on, uh, sending the CAO as well?
Well, and then we have to follow that up with the CAO.
Separate motion?
Yeah, yeah, so we'll do that separately. So we have, uh, the motion before us with the two councillors being Counselor Day and, and Sullivan. All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carried? And now entertain a motion about our CAO making himself available.
So I would move, um, that we support, um, staff attending AVICC, um, if, if they're available.
Second.
To the mayor and council, um, I, I'm, uh, free, uh, however, given time away from, uh, a new position here. I see the value, yeah, in, in going, but also doing my job here. Uh, looking at reducing expend, uh, expenses such as hotels and accommodations, et cetera. Uh, maybe there's an opportunity for me to participate, maybe on one day that is more significant than the others. Uh, a lot of these, uh, there's a lot of networking, yes, that's very important. However, um, there might be some very good components on one of the days. I would, eh, like to look at the agenda and, you know, provide that insight. Um, there might be two days, so may require some accommodations, but, uh, just speaking on all three at this time without looking at the full agenda and it's very difficult for me right now, but, uh, I could make myself available if required.
I think the vote, uh, simply puts the, um, ask in front and, and, uh, support for that, so. Uh, anybody else? All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carried?
You know, the motion was that you were going to sleep in your car, right?
Yeah, right. Um, okay, seven point one point four, discussion Director of Finance in regards to Budget Bylaw number one-five-three-four.
We're nearly there.
Thank you, Your Worship. Uh, the reason this has been put on the agenda is that since the last time council, uh, basically gave the approval for the five-year financial plan, there have been a couple of minor amendments, none of which have an impact on taxation. A few projects such as the ones this evening have been added to the budget and there's been a corresponding decrease to the budget in another, uh, project, Kelly Road. So this is just to let you have a look at it before you see it in the budget bylaw later tonight.
So there's no required resolution? This one didn't come with anything from staff on it? So it's just, uh, information?
Yes, so that when you, uh, if you choose to give first, second, third reading of the budget bylaw, you're aware that it has changed from the last time you've seen it.
Yeah, okay. Uh, any members of council with a question to our Director of Finance in regards to what's before you? Seeing none, then a motion perhaps to receive that?
So moved.
All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carried? Moving then through to bylaws, which is our first one, eight point one, uh, one-five-three-four, first, second and third readings?
Move introduction.
Second.
Sorry, just went, which bylaw are you on? One-five-three-four?
First one?
The first, first one? Okay, got you. Thank you. So we have mover and seconder, uh, all those in favor? Opposed? Motion carried?
Move second.
Second, second.
Discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries? Second. All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carried? Uh, bylaw number one-five-two-two, final reading, Ca- Callwood Land Use Bylaw, number one-five-one, nineteen eighty-nine, amendment number one-three-four, uh, thirty-one, or twenty-one thirty-two and twenty-one thirty-eight, Sook Road.
Move introduction.
Nope, it's a final.
Sorry, move final.
Second.
All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carried? Uh, bylaw number one-five-three-one, final reading, Callwood Main Sewer Local Area Service Bylaw, Establishment and Loan Authorization Bylaw, number five-nine-eight, two thousand and one, amendment number nineteen. All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carried? Motion to adjourn?
Move adjournment?
All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carried?